Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting for the Board of Commissioners on Monday, April 8th, 2024. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondak.
President.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Here.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Here.
Commissioner Cavendish.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner McCollum.
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Here.
Commissioner Holmes.
Here.
Chief? Before we go any further, it is my duty to announce we held, we met in executive session at the conclusion of our meeting last week on April 1st, and we also met in executive session before the start of this meeting today, April 8th. Those meetings discussed real estate and litigation issues. Our first item tonight is the promotion of a police officer here in Haverford Township Police Department. I will invite, where is our guest? Ms. Dawson, the head of our Civil Service Commission, and Chief and Deputy Chief.
Oops, is that? Good evening, Commissioners. There we go. Here is the Chairperson of the Civil Service Commission. On December 11th, 2023, the Civil Service Commission began the process to develop the list of entry-level officers eligible to be promoted to the rank of Sergeant. The promotional examination was administered on February 21st, 2024, and interviews took place on March 12th and 14th of 2024. The Civil Service Commission is formally requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve the Sergeant promotional list, so I'm asking for a motion to approve this list.
I move to approve the list.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on the list? I think we could do this by voice acclamation. All in favor of reading the list?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The motion to adopt the list is enacted. Thank you.
And so furthermore, the Civil Service Commission is also formally requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve the promotion of an entry-level officer to the rank of Sergeant, so I'm asking for a motion to approve this promotional, this promotion. With your consideration, we are submitting the following three candidates: Brian McDonald, Ryan McGuire, and Lawrence Holmes. Howard, sorry.
Howard.
Good try. Lawrence Howard, sorry.
Kind of chill through the chief right there. Thank you. Thank you for those names and for those extremely qualified candidates. I will entertain a motion from my colleagues.
I motion to appoint Officer Brian McDonald as a Haverford Township Police Sergeant.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any other nominations? Hearing none. We will now consider the promotion of Officer McDonald to Haverford Township Police Sergeant. Mr. Berman, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavendish.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes, Sergeant McDonald.
I know, I'm sorry.
Commissioners, we're pleased to have Sergeant McDonald as one of our ranking officers now. Sergeant Brian McDonald was hired by the Haverford Township Police Department on April 9th, 2015. Brian is a graduate of Westchester University with a Bachelor of Science degree in criminal justice. Since joining the department, Brian has worked in Patrol Division, Special Operations Division, Detective Unit. Brian is a well-rounded member of the Police Department and brings a wealth of experience and knowledge to his new position as Sergeant. Brian has served on the SWAT team, as a field training officer, undercover officer, crash investigator, honor guard team member, and as an officer in charge within his squad. He has been described by his supervisor as a person who leads by example and diligent in his work. Brian has received seven unit commendations, one Commendation of Merit, Commendation of Bravery, and one for Office for the Year Commendation. In 2023, Brian received the Distinguished Philadelphia Crime Commission Award for his bravery when confronting and taking into custody an armed adversary who had previously threatened his family with a firearm. Here tonight with Brian is his wife Amanda, his daughter McKenna, his mother Michelle, his father Chuck, his mother-in-law Michelle, his father-in-law, former Chief of Ridley Police, Ridley Park Police Department, Mark Maselli.
On behalf of the Civil Service Commission, I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners. We're always pleased to provide this service both to the Board as well as to the community of Haverford Township. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Chairperson. Our next item on the agenda tonight are two proclamations, a proclamation relating to the 2024 Finland Exchange and also a proclamation heralding Arbor Day. If I may, I'd like to exercise presidential privilege and read the proclamation for the Finland Exchange. This was proclaimed at the opening event two weeks ago, which is really, really wonderful event, but let me go ahead for the benefit of our viewing audience. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania welcomes the families and players of the Vikingit Hockey Club of Helsinki, Finland. And whereas the Haverford Hawks Ice Hockey Club is a non-for-profit 501(c)(3) organization that teaches children ages four to 18 the sport and spirit of ice hockey. The Hawks have been an important part of the Haverford Township community since 1975, providing children in our area with a great opportunity to learn the importance of dedication, teamwork, and sportsmanship. And whereas the Hawks have served its players and families for over 25 years through the Haverford Hawks Finland USA Exchange, this exceptional cultural exchange program provides local children with a unique opportunity to learn about and experience different cultures while sharing the sport they love. And whereas each year, the teams exchange home ice with the Hawks visiting Finland in 2023 to live and appreciate the Finnish culture. Now, in 2024, we welcome the Finns to Haverford Township to live and to appreciate our culture here in the United States and to continue promoting the goodwill fostered by youth sports. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford wish the Finland Exchange continued camaraderie in the true spirit of international friendship. Proclaimed this 22nd, proclaimed this 8th day of March 2024, sorry, do that again. Proclaimed this 8th day of April 2024, Township of Haverford.
Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim the last Friday in April as Arbor Day in Haverford Township and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees, parks, and woodlands. And further, the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford urge all citizens to plant and care for trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Proclaim this 8th day of April 2024.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. The next item on our agenda is our Citizens Forum. Citizens Forum starts with registered speakers and then moves to any speakers who would like to speak on an item that is on the agenda this evening. And then, as folks recall, later in the meeting at the end of our official business, once again, people are invited to come up and they can speak on a matter that is not on the agenda. Tonight, we do not have, as of, as of today, we do not have any registered speakers for this evening's Citizens Forum. So as I always do, I will start on my left, see if there's anyone who would like to speak on an agenda item, starting in the front row or the second row. Anyone in the third row, in the fourth row, here in the first row, second row, and in the back row. Okay, well, we now move on to the Bureau of Fire update.
The Bureau of Fire report for March of 2024. We had a total incidences, incidents of 73, 60 were township incidents, 13 out-of-t township mutual aid incidents. Average personnel per call is 16. 847 personnel hours committed to incidents and 1,101 personnel hours committed to training. The Bureau of Fire responded to one working fire within Haverford Township on 3/19 at 106 Woodbine Road, the rear of the house. They also provided mutual aid to one working fire within Delaware County and one working fire in Montgomery County. Company 56 provided mutual aid to Chester City for water rescue and recovery. And that's the report.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Gondak. Our next item is the Township Auditor update. He really should have his own theme music, shouldn't he?
I actually started today in California. I woke up in Habertown, PA. Still spinning a little bit. But anyway, I've reviewed the warrants and expenditures for this meeting, and I found no regularities, and all my questions were answered to my satisfaction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dawson. Next on the agenda is our Township Manager update. Mr. Berman?
Thank you. I will update the board on a few projects that are going on in the township right now. Obviously, the renovation and expansion of the library is continuing, and it is actually still on schedule for the spring of 2025. This week, so everybody's aware, the contractors will continue the exterior demolition of the front entrance, and they're preparing for the new entrance. They will also continue with exterior concrete footers underpinning of the original bank building, and they'll be working inside, framing partitions, and performing the rough-in work for the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems. Mill Road will be closed each day this week from 7:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. In addition, we're preparing for some improvements to the stadium. We have the significant upgrades, including the replacement of the chillers and the cooling towers, and this is a reminder that the stadium will be closed beginning, I believe, May 15th, and that'll be an extended closure so all of that work can be completed. These systems are what make our ice conditions so nice in the stadium, and it has a great reputation. So these are very important systems. In addition, we are working with an architectural consultant for some locker room renovations, and so that's going to improve the locker rooms, foster a sense of community, give us a better comfort level, and again, make the stadium the place to be for all kinds of winter sports, but year-round. The Pennsy Trail Extension, I think I mentioned last week that the Pennsy Trail Bridge is due to be installed on May 18th, and then the trail will be completed after that date. So the bridge comes, Manoa Road is closed for the weekend. Hopefully, we'll get it done in one day, and then the, the trail will be extended with blacktop. It'll be graded. The stormwater, underground stormwater management systems will be installed down towards the Lanark Shopping Center, and all I can say is we're getting there, and we're all very excited. Likewise, the southern extension of the Derby Creek Trail. So we have started the work at Vermont and Warrior, and we're working from there along the outfields towards Merry Place. Ultimately, the township intends to connect that segment with the existing trail at Merry Place with a short spur that will lead up towards Vermont and Glendale. And incidentally, Vermont and Glendale, we're working with Pendot on improvements to that intersection to make it more accessible for pedestrians and, of course, a little bit safer. So we are also just finishing up the Derby Road Streetscape Improvement Project, and that included sidewalk improvements, pedestrian amenities, and also handicap curving at the intersection there. We're continuing with the Safe Streets for All program. I believe the last meeting is tomorrow night at Bethany Church in the Ninth Ward, and there's still an opportunity for input on our website. You'll find a survey where you can submit all the information you'd like. The action plan, I'll just remind the board, is a prerequisite for implementation grants under the Safe Streets for All program. So we're going to come up with the ideas for this holistic and strategic mechanism for improving the streets in Haverford Township, and then we'll be applying for grants to hopefully get some of that, some of those projects accomplished. The county, at the same time, is working on a Vision Zero project, and that study is attempting to, again, garner funding for improvements to most of the state roads in the county. They're looking specifically in Haverford Township at Westchester Pike, no surprise there, along the Manoa Shopping Center and heading down towards the Blue Route, and they're also looking at the area of Westchester Pike and Township Blind Road, the triangle there. There is a survey on the county's website. It would be great if, when you fill out the survey for the township, if you could also fill out the survey for the county. And the Park and Ride at Mill and Caracong, paving will be performed this week, and that project is just about complete. So that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I do want to add one thing to the agenda right here. We had committee reports last week, but one committee report wasn't available until this week, so I'm just going to ask Commissioner Forstie-Grupp to provide us an update on the redistricting committee.
Thank you. The redistricting committee met on March 22nd to discuss the results of the 2020 census. The primary objective of redistricting, or reapportionment, is to uphold the principle of one person, one vote. As population demographics change over time, certain areas may experience growth or decline, leading to an imbalance in representation. Reapportionment aims to correct these discrepancies by redistributing electoral districts to ensure equal representation for all residents. According to the 2020 census, the population of Haverford Township was 50,430 people. Therefore, the average population of each of the nine wards should be 5,603 people. As a general rule of thumb, no ward should deviate by more than 10% from the average population. Unfortunately, the population of Ward Four was 6,183 people, representing a 10.6% deviation from the average. We believe this deviation is largely due to the development of Haverford Reserve, much of which occurred between the 2010 census and the 2020 census. To help address this deviation, the township engaged CH Planning to perform data collection and analysis, along with a short report summarizing their findings and setting forth three options for consideration. This report is complete and will be published on the township's website very soon. All three options include a reapportionment of a small part of Ward Four over to Ward Three, which is contiguous to Ward Four. Based on the report, we can assume that any of the three approaches would not violate the Voting Rights Act, will not have a substantial impact on election outcomes, and will result in contiguous wards after the redrawing of boundaries. Determining the most suitable approach will rely on input from residents, which we will solicit through surveys, written comments, and of course, at opening meetings, upcoming meetings of the Board of Commissioners. At the conclusion of the public input phase, the Board of Commissioners provide direction for the redrawing map for final consideration. Approval of the new map will take the form of an amendment to Chapter 37 of the General Laws of Haverford Township. So there will be two readings and two final opportunities for public comment, just as there would be for any other ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Forstie-Grupp. The next item for our consideration.
Pardon me. If I may go back to the Township Manager update, I do have one question for Mr. Berman.
Of course. Commissioner Gondak.
Mr. Berman, just, and I apologize if I missed it, but over the last week, certain letters have been going out to residents of the township regarding a cybersecurity issue in the township, and I've seen a lot about it on social media, including questions about the validity of the letter itself and whether or not that's some sort of a scam. Could you just take a moment to give a brief explanation of what those letters represent?
Yes, thank you. The, the letters are valid. They are legitimate. The township servers were accessed in April of 2023. The IT Department immediately took steps to secure the network, and we did hire an outside cybersecurity company to confirm that our network was secure and that no malicious software had been installed. There's no specific evidence directly linking this incident to any incidents of financial fraud or identity theft, but in an abundance of caution, we hired a forensic investigatory team to perform a thorough and extensive manual review of all of the data on the servers at that time. Due to the limitations of the available forensic evidence, the forensic investigatory team could not determine the volume, if any, of data potentially accessed and/or acquired. And so after several months of extensive efforts to identify, review, and analyze the potentially impacted data, on March 18th, the team informed us that the potentially impacted files may contain some personal information of certain individuals. We sent out those letters. We engaged a company to send out those letters for us, and they've been sent to any individual whose personal information may have been accessed. The Township does not have the staff to handle the potential call volume resulting from those letters, and so the township established a dedicated and confidential toll-free response line where folks can call if they have questions pertaining this matter. The number is 888-680-3519. Again, that's 888-680-3519, and that number will be available Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And so we're directing questions to that call center, and if, if they can't answer the questions, they'll take your information, and they will hopefully get back to you with the appropriate information. So that kind of outlines what happened.
Thank you very much for that clarification.
Could I, let me ask you a question, Mr. Berman. If, if I understand that correctly, it was impossible to ascertain what data may or may not have been taken, so on an abundance of caution, we identified, we sent letters to every single person for whom the township had sensitive data? Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. So, and, and the fact is that this breach took place a year ago.
That's correct. It took that long for the consulting firm to go through all of the data and identify what information may have been accessed.
And I appreciate that, and I, please don't get me wrong, I'm not criticizing the amount of time it took to get the release out. Obviously, that they found any data, any, any specific breaches, they would have, they spent that time looking for specific breaches, I guess, is probably a fair way to characterize it.
Looking for specific breaches, yes.
And the fact that it was over a year ago, I guess, as much as anyone can breathe a sigh of relief in these times, there's certainly six letters my family got. None of us are aware of any, you know, theft issues or financial shenanigans, so hopefully most or all people who got notified are safe. So thank you for that information. Any other questions for our Township Manager on that or any issue he raised? Hearing none. Did anyone have any questions for Commissioner Forstie-Grupp? Okay, then we'll move on. Next item on our agenda is the approval of our minutes from our meeting of March 11th.
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of March 11th.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions, comments, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Hearing none. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavendish.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Abstained. I was absent.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Our next item on the agenda is the release of the financial security that was, that was held pending the expiration of a certain amount of time after the construction of Atherton and Haverford Reserve.
We spoke about warrants.
Oh, but first, we're going to do, we're going to do warrants. So everybody hold on to their hats.
We should do approve the following warrant, number 4, 2024, totaling $7,259,653.07. General and sewer fund payroll, March 14th, 2024, in the amount of $817,859.12. General and sewer fund payroll, March 28th, 2024, in the amount of $822,425.54. General fund disbursements, number 4, 2024, in the amount of $326,289.10. Sewer fund disbursements, number 4, 2024, in the amount of $185,358.96. Community development block grant fund disbursement, number 4, 2024, in the amount of $57,075.09. Capital projects fund disbursement, number 4, 2024, in the amount of $1,545,794.63. American Rescue Plan Fund Disbursement, number 4, 2024, in the amount of $336,363,406.32. Credit card disbursement ending March 27th, 2024, in the amount of $12,582.89.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on these warrants? Hearing none. Commissioner Berman, I'm sorry, Manager. Berman, you know, I'm just going to leave. It's just not, this is not.
It's just not, this is not my day. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti-Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. The next item on our agenda is a motion to approve the final release of financial security in the amount of $187,000 associated with the Atherton parcel five improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any questions or comments on this? I know we talked about it last week for a moment. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti-Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. The next item for our consideration this evening is an ordinance. We have several ordinances to consider tonight. This one is Ordinance P5 of 2024, amending Chapter 47 and Chapter 182 for games of scale and significant tobacco retailers is our second reading.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P5, 2024, amending Chapter 47 entitled "Amusement Devices of the General Laws of the Township of Haverford" to further regulate the premises within which such devices may be permitted and associated definitions. Amending Chapter 182 entitled "Zoning" to clarify the definition of convenience store to define e-liquids, electronic cigarettes, electronic nicotine delivery systems, game of skill machines, hookah bars, indoor recreational or amusement facilities, mechanical amusement devices, significant tobacco retailers and smoke shops, to prohibit mechanical amusement devices within the premises of significant tobacco retailers, and to prohibit game of skill machines in convenience stores. To expressly prohibit significant tobacco retailers in the C2 Neighborhood Commercial District, to delete cigarette and tobacco as permitted to be sold in gift shops in the C3 General Commercial District, to establish significant tobacco retailers, including smoke shops, vape shops, and hookah lounges, as a use permitted by conditional use in the C5 Shopping Center Commercial District, and to establish the criteria for the approval of a significant tobacco retailer's use.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? See, this is something we discussed a great deal over the last couple of months. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti-Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Our next, our final ordinance for the evening, Ordinance number P6, 2024, amending Chapter Four, Administration of Government, to provide for the criterion process for the naming of township property and establishing a township property naming committee. First reading.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P6, 2024, amending Chapter Four, Administration of Government, to provide for the criteria and process for the naming of township property and establishing a township property naming committee.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I just wanted to note that per the board's request at last week's work session, I did add some language, which I'll read out loud, regarding township property and specifically defining it more clearly. I'll read the whole definition. Township property: real property owned or controlled by Haverford Township and/or improvements or facilities located on property owned or controlled by Haverford Township, including but not limited to buildings, rooms, recreation areas, parks, fields, open space, streets, pavilions, and other property or facilities or parts thereof, owned or controlled by the township as deemed appropriate by the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners. Certain items, such as benches, bricks, flags, placards, slats, or other items that are used to enhance public spaces in the township are exempt. That's all I have.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions or comments on this ordinance? Before we vote, I want to thank you and your team for your excellent work on this ordinance. And Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti-Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. We now move to resolutions. The first resolution for us to consider is Resolution Number 2374 of 2024, and this relates to the 2024 CDBG projects.
Motion to adopt Resolution Number 2374, 2024, that the attached Exhibit A representing the allocations of funds for the 49th year CDBG action plan are hereby approved, and that no changes are made to the citizen participation plan, and that the proper officers are hereby authorized to take such steps as may be necessary to implement the intent of this resolution.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any questions or comments? Commissioner McCloskey, I'm just going to read the actual proposed projects from Exhibit A for purposes of transparency here. Housing, the 2024, and CDBG, for anyone who does not know, stands for Community Development Block Grant. Based on the 2023 allocation of $804,564, the projects are housing rehab, $200,000; homeless assistance, $20,000; fair housing, $2,000; Suri Services for seniors, $20,000; Delgo Transit for seniors, $10,000; and administrative expenses of $160,912; $100,000 to the handicap accessibility at the scadium; and $312,912 to the Oakford Road culvert repairs. Any questions or comments? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti-Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. The next resolution for our consideration, Resolution Number 2375, 2024, is Friends of the Grange.
I make a motion to adopt resolution, number 2375-2024, or to authorizing amendments to the Constitution and bylaws of the Friends of the Grange Incorporated.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments?
I have a brief question. At the work session, I know that Commissioner Hart had brought up some concerns regarding the amendment, and if I read it correctly, I believe those concerns were addressed. I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, there's no longer a restriction on the number of terms that we can appoint our representative.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti-Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Next for our consideration this evening is a number of contract awards. We take them one at a time. Contract award for Manoa and Alston Road.
Motion to...
Go ahead.
Motion to award the Manoa Road-Alston Road traffic signal upgrade to Marino Corporation Skipback PA in the amount of $233,980, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on this contract?
Just, could we get a description of what's planned there?
I'd be happy to do that, Commissioner. So we're replacing the existing crosswalk there, obviously, for the school down there. The old overhead signage and flashing signals coming out. There's gonna be a new overhead sign there and two, what they call rapid rectangular flashing beacons, which are the square beacons that have that little pulsating action to them. Additional signage, pavement markings, and handicap ramps are gonna be done too.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti-Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. The next contract for our consideration relates to electric vehicle charging stations upgrades at the crack.
Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioner Trombetta.
I'd like to make a motion to award the electric vehicles charging stations upgrades at the crack to H, I'm sorry, AJM Electric, Inc., in the amount of $47,800, submitting the lowest responsible bid. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on this?
Yeah, again, just a description of what the upgrades will be. Everybody have that?
I can take it, just very briefly. It should be a mirror image of what's out here in the parking lot, so there'll be four spots, two dual port poles.
Okay.
accommodate four cars each.
Do we have it, I mean, you probably don't have it now, but on how often they're used, how much usage we're getting?
I don't have it with me. We could definitely bring that to the next meeting or share with the board, but it definitely has picked up from the early days, you know, anything new, you know, there's definitely a lot more use than there used to be.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Cuthbertson. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti-Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. The next contract for us to consider is a two-year traffic signal maintenance contract.
I make a mo, mo, motion to, wait, no, this is mine, sorry, but I'll still read it.
In for a penny, in for a pound, Connor, go ahead.
I make a motion to award the two-year traffic signal maintenance contract to Charles Higgins Sons and Corp. Media in, again, the amount of $35,545,000, or submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on this? Hearing none. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti-Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Our next motion for, our next contract for our consideration is a sanitary sewer pipe and cleaning contract.
I make a mo, motion to award a contract for sanitary sewer pipe inspection and cleaning in the vicinity of Golf Mill, Stratmore, Cathmere, and Darby Roads in the total amount of $15,008.75 to Pipe Services Corporation of West Chester.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on this? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti-Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. We now have three contracts to consider for the library renovation. The first one, prime contractor change orders.
Mr. President?
Mr. Forsti-Grupp?
Motion to approve change order four in the amount of $40,386.25 with Ricon Construction for the library renovation and expansion GC contract.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments about this?
I do have a question as it relates to all three of the change orders. I understand that without any big project, there's always going to be change orders, and some of the change orders, the amount we have to pay goes up, sometimes it goes down. My question is, is, I know that we built in, you know, a healthy amount into the budget to cover these change orders, and I don't know if this is for Ms. Cuthbertson or not, but are we still within our comfort zone in terms of the cost for this project?
Just in general, Commissioner, to address your question, we had, I think, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but 1.1, 1.2 million worked in for contingency. Right now, I believe we're around $450,000 to $500,000 in change orders, so we're still within our contingency allowance.
Okay, and do you have, I don't know if there's been, if there's been any forecasting with regards to the contractors about future potential change orders coming down the road? Do we still feel comfortable that we're gonna stay within that one point, whatever it was?
To my knowledge, I have not heard of any large-scale ones, but Dave, I don't know if you wanna weigh in, if you have.
Commissioner, I haven't heard of any large-scale change orders that might be coming. I will also add that this is the demolition portion of the work and the rough-in portion of the work having to deal with a very old building in part of it, an old building in the other part of it, and in addition. So most of what we're talking about is what they're going to find in terms of the old building and things that weren't foreseen, and some of them have been significant, yes.
Yeah, 'cause, or, 'cause when we got a tour of the place, me, Mike, and Sherry, we, or they explained to us that there are some things that they wouldn't have known that was there, and as they, or began to take down the place, they, well, they saw things that come to an expense that they didn't see, so we didn't see it either, so, yeah, so it was nice to hear that stuff and to learn, and to learn about it, too.
Thank you for clarifying.
Can we assume in a job like this, with renovating an older building, that the, that we can extrapolate that we've seen the worst of it, that the changes?
I would.
Well, but again, I expect professionals to have done, undertaken all of this analysis, and that it is not a surprise to anyone that these things are happening at the outset of the, of the construction work, and that the contingency that was created was a contingency based on intelligent analysis of the age of the building and, and when it is, they're going to see the bulk of unexpected problems. And I'm assuming that one of the things they told you is that they expect these things upfront.
They expect, like, they see it now, and that's, that's more, like, I don't, I don't expect them to see anything more in the next, like, well, I hope and pray not, but, but, I think that they saw things that, that they saw as they take, they take down, down the place, and that's where they see it more than once in the continued days.
Well, I take full responsibility for jinxing us if I, if anything goes wrong, but I do appreciate that clarification. Any other questions or comments on this first contract? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti-Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Now, our second contract to consider for the library?
Motion to, Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion to approve change order two in the amount of $11,567.14 with Dolan Mechanical[1725.66] Motion to approve change order two in the amount of $11,567.14 with Dolan Mechanical for the library renovation and expansion mechanical contract.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any other questions or comments about this particular contract?
These two involve ductwork that they were not expecting. So one, one cost is associated with the kitchen exhaust hood, and the ductwork had to be added from the hood to get it to exhaust it to the exterior of the building. And the other was regard to HVAC ductwork due to unforeseen conditions in the field.
Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Finally, the final contract this evening relating to the library.
Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Motion to approve change order two in the amount of $2,887.05 with Dolan Mechanical for the library renovation and expansion plumbing contract.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any questions or comments on this contract?
This, if I'll add a little detail, this is to add new rainwater piping. After demolition, it was determined that the existing rainwater piping had to be replaced. An allowance had been included in the plumber's contract, but the total scope of work exceeded that allowance, so there is this very small overrun.
Thank you, Commissioner Forstie Grupp. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Before we move on to the next item, I think it would be a good idea for us to invite the construction manager to come either to our next work session, or, actually, I think our next work session would make sense. And we can ask our construction manager directly some of these questions, ask about the project itself. Unlike you folks to my right, I have not been in the site yet, other than to drive by it, and I would love to hear, and I think the public would love to hear about the progress of the project, and maybe we could start talking about timelines as well. So we could do that, Mr. Berman, that would be great. And unless anybody says otherwise, I think we should plan it for the May work session. Not like a plan? Right. Welcome. Next item on our agenda is appointments. We have a spot on the historical commission to fill an unexpired four-year term, expires at the end of next year, 2025. Do we have any appointments? That will remain open until next month, and we will visit that again. The next item for us to consider?
I think we need, don't we need that, or to advertise this? Has this been advertised?
I believe this was published on the website, and early on, we had received a couple, at least one notice of interest that I thought we had shared with the board, but I'll check with Gloria tomorrow.
All right, well, if there's anybody out there who would like to apply, please do.
Should I say the same thing about the vacant property review committee, or do we have any combination tonight?
Somebody out there who would like to apply, please do. And for senior citizens.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think we will just move on beyond that one to-
Please apply.
Yeah, I will postpone that to May as well. The next item on our agenda is the continuation of Citizens Forum for Non-Agenda Items. This is exactly what it sounds like. Anybody here who would like to speak on any item could come forward. I ask you to try to confine your comments to approximately three minutes. It is not gravely enforced, but at some point after four minutes, I will ask people to wrap up. So anybody here on my left in the front row, yes. Tom.
Hi, Michelle Alvarez. Two things. I came to ask about that letter that we've received, three in our household, and I'm curious, this contractor that you hired, did they investigate the dark web? Because that's where they claim these kinds of databases are resold to scammers in the future, so it's not like we're all out of the water yet, because they could have potential for the future. And then the second thing I wanted to ask is, are we taking down the original stone facing of the original bank building for the library, or is it going to be maintained as that original appearance?
I'll answer the easy one first. The stone will remain on the bank building the way it is. We're not planning to take it down. We don't want any more change orders, of course, and the, the dark web and the additional investigation, I'll have to get back to you on.
First row, yes.
Good evening. I'm Helene Comory Smith. I live here in the township. As I watched the April 1st work session meeting, I will say I felt outraged by some of the endorsements of the asymmetric visions for Haverford Township. I listened to the composting grant report that the township paid $25,000 of our tax dollars to complete, and the composting report, I listened to the consultant begin that initially we outsourced the composting collection, then I realized we would be placing a carbon footprint for just two years to just enact composting. Secondly, I heard we would need to purchase a new truck for composting, then I surmised a tax increase. It was stated the township would reduce trash to one day per week. I reflected upon a town already burdened with an rodent infestation, mine at one time was, my home, my property, that at times requires certain wards of the township to complain to get services from this municipality. The raw problem is not eradicated and now will burden stakeholders of Haverford Township by withholding trash. The consultant stated that taxpayers would now pay more for two cans of trash versus one can of trash. As I drew a conclusion, people would be punished for trash. It was also recommended additional staff would be needed to curate the composting, which is an office staff member, not someone who's on the street working the service. Therefore, I pondered, does that mean that larger households will pay more in trash tax than those in smaller family sizes, simply because they have more children or have generational families living in Haverford Township? Returning to the composting study, I also heard that our taxes would go up for the sake of reducing the carbon footprint, so my deduction was correct. We will pay more to fulfill an ideology. We, the people here, are paying more and for a benefit of composting? Composting's a service I don't desire to have. Been there and done that when my children were little, was so fun and all this. It takes hours away from family time and preferred family time to do composting. When elites try to create a decree or follow a popular belief based on ideology, it makes my skin crawl. As a middle-class American, I'm not significantly contributing to the carbon footprint. Okay? I have a duty, you, some of the progressive Democrats stated, we have a duty and responsibility for the safety to save one another in democracy, which is an absolute untruth. Let me give you some examples. Our governor, Josh Shapiro, met with Alex Soros, the son of George Soros, on March 18th in Lackawanna County. Alex took a private jet to get there. On March 16th, Josh and his family took a helicopter, a private charger, to get to the 76ers game in South Philly from Harrisburg. Then we have the Americans, the Obamas, who flew to England to meet with Ruchi Sunak on March 18th. The Obamas are jet setters, having homes in Martha Vineyards, in D.C., a lavish apartment in New York, and a vacation home in Hawaii. While the little middle class will never create as much carbon as the rich aristocrats themselves, who are telling me how to live, and those aristocrats equip you with some type of ideology, the aristocrats play to take away our American freedoms. During this current period, I'm reminded, are we repeating history? I'm not going to sit here silently and just continue to allow oppressive policies to be pushed on us for change in an ideological belief. Furthermore, I believe we should prioritize infrastructure improvements such as repairing township streets and thoroughfares that people outside the township use to access major highways and areas in the state. I also want to ensure it's critical that the ad hoc boards are working appropriately and providing with, are provided with transparency to the public. Unlike the zoning board, which was not privy to appropriate information, causing a circus on a variance exemption at the meeting on March 7th, improper information was not provided in a timely manner. At this time, I am sure, unsure if proper procedures will be implemented for the April 25th meeting. Recently, there had been a decline in trash service, something as a supervisor on the street needs to be reviewing. Trash pickup in Haverford Township community has been declining in the service since the township decided to move many of the trash collectors to part-time. Therefore, our taxes continue to increase with the service that I'm, was accustomed to. Lastly, I suggest that we reevaluate the spending of our tax dollars, focus on providing the necessary services to our community. Stop looking at NGOs and other ad hocks to send our tax money other ways. I'm asking for people to be accountable for their spending and their efforts to increase economic growth in our community. We must see results and progress in our community. I urge the U officials to listen to the concerns of the residents and focus on issues that truly matter. Let us work together to create a better Haverford Township for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cuthbertson. The second row, anybody would like to speak? On the second row, yes. Mr. Hall?
Good evening, Todd Hall. I live in the second ward. I attended a rally against antisemitism at a park in Bryn Mawr last week to express my support for the Jewish community and to speak up against antisemitism. It was reminded to all in attendance that Haverford College Student Group has promoted the concept that Israel has spread COVID as a bioweapon. And while I know the college is not subject to township oversight, this is very concerning and very troubling. The college should speak up more directly against this hate and misinformation. The township has stated, which I agree with, that residents in this township should feel safe, so accordingly, I pass along this information to raise awareness and to show my support.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Anybody else in the second row? The third row, ma'am?
Hi, my name's Mary Dikter, and I had a question. Am I allowed to ask a question?
You are, and if we can answer it, we will. We might answer it after everything's over, but go ahead.
Okay. Is there a spot I can get a map of the trails? The trails, all of them and where they are? And also, is there a document that gives, like, the history, like, why, why the trails? I miss that whole thing, and I just heard about them, you know, like, maybe last year. And how can I catch up on that?
Thank you for that question. Our website, right? I will actually, I'll defer to-
Organization, which you could get online, Haverford Trails, and they're, they've helped develop the trails, they would give you, they certainly have maps of all the trails and some of the history.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next row, yes? I'm sorry, the same row. Welcome back.
My name's Dori Dowd. I'm a resident of Haverford Township. Thanks for the opportunity. With the recent rollout of Safe Streets for All, I would like to share two observations that I would request improvement going forward. There are problem parallels that I've noticed between the implementation of the draft comprehensive plan in 2022 and the current Safe Streets for All initiative. Problem one, poor communication with the comprehensive plan. No one knew in June of 2022 that the comprehensive plan was restarting and Safe Streets for All. Many participants in this recent initiative were notified, were not notified of their focus group meetings. For example, Ward One only had two individuals at their meeting for Ward One. Problem two was utilizing residents of a small section of Haverford Township to originate or direct both the comprehensive plan and Safe Streets for All initiatives. It is my understanding that the urban research and development consulting firm held focus groups with Brynford residents prior to the pandemic about the comprehensive plan, and many of us didn't know about that. And then for Safe Streets for All, based on its plans, on the results, based the plans of its initiative, on the results of the Brynford Safe Streets study dated September 14th of 2023. So in closing here, I would really like to request to please improve communications and transparency to ensure better awareness among your constituents. Use maybe a more modern means to post public notices on township website instead of posting them in the newspapers, because nobody reads newspapers anymore, really, let's be honest. And then for the second part, please make sure more than just a small subset of Haverford Township constituents are able to have their voices heard when initiatives are being developed. We all deserve a say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in that third row? Fourth row, yes?
Hi, my name is Michael Lee. I'm also a township resident. I also wanted to comment about the Safe Streets for All. The first meeting that we had, Ward One, that was on March 12th, the day after your working group meeting. On March 7th, we had the initial web kickoff meeting. At that time, it was stated that in order to attend the focus group, you had to fill out an online survey, you'd be notified by email. So what happened was, and 12 residents of the first ward did that, what happened was the email never went out, and people got a phone call at 4:00 the day of the meeting, so it actually went to 4:00 for a 6:00 meeting, and it was from a California number, so you had to check your voicemail, because nobody picks up those numbers. So that's, so, and then after that, we changed the rules. We made it so that the township sent out an email, their insight and whatever email, it's excellent, by the way. And so other four focus groups had, they had 25 at one focus group meeting, and we only had two. And then the solution suggested by the township was that these people would get a written survey to fill out, which they've already done, and they could attend another ward meeting. The problem is, award meetings have a map, and you're focused on that, and they last an hour. So I'm asking that we just redo the Ward One focus group meeting. It takes one hour, you do it here or in the crack. Anyway, that's my request. The other thing I did want to mention was about the, we were talking about the compost thing, which I'm in favor of compost, but it seemed to me like the person was an advocate for a position. She was saying things like, you as, you're leaders, and you have to ignore comments opposed to it. And that's not the way this works. We respect every person's comments. I think when we hire contractors, they should be not advocates for a position, but instead be looking to inform them. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Anybody else on the left side of the room? Here on my right? First row, second row, third row, yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Patty Schwab, and just first of all, thank you for all that you do for all of us here in the township. Despite everyone coming with problems or requests, we really do appreciate your hard work, at least I do.
You're welcome.
Commissioner McCollum, special thank you to you and Mr. Berman for responding to me so quickly. I am here, though, about the parking lot again with the kiosk. Is it possible that we could consider putting a kiosk in place now? I understand you have a commission going to look at the parking lot situation, but to have it pay only, like, app-only with Park Mobile, it's really unfriendly, very problematic. There's a lot of people who are really frustrated. I think while you're doing the commission, it's an easy fix. While I respect the reason that was given to me last time, I don't really see anybody going after these, what do you call it, the way you put the coins in? Upper Darby has a kiosk. I mean, Upper Darby has a kiosk for crying out loud. Philadelphia has kiosks. Media has kiosks. Can't we just have one that takes coins, cash, credit card, and then if you want to do your app? At least while we're waiting, I just think it's just a more friendly way of going about that, so. And the other thing I want to bring up with Park Mobile is, I don't know if anybody else notices, but if you were to put an hour in, it's a 45 cent surcharge. Okay? Mind you, if I put 50 cents for just, you know, for that hour. But then if I extend it, because I'm having a really great time, I'm at Nudie's or I'm at wherever, Haverford Town Grill, let's say, and I want to extend, I got to pay 25 cents and then another 45 cent surcharge, can't it just be one surcharge, even if I extend it? Because there's other apps to do that, so just consideration to look into that, doll. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. You're most welcome. Anybody else? Major Peterson, United States Army Retired. So for about a year, we've had the single-use plastic bag ban in Haverford Township. As Mayor Koch would say, how we doing? Okay? Is it a success or is it a failure? Well, it was approved with no Haverford Township metrics. We heard about Midway Island Hawaii Turtles. We heard about Midway Island Hawaii Turtles. You know, that group of, of turtles that's closer to Tokyo, Japan than it is to Haverford Township? Well, how many of those Midway Island Hawaii Turtles have been saved by our single-use plastic bag ban? You know what? It's probably zero. Why? Because all that data provided by the Environmental Advisory Council is worthless to Haverford Township. It doesn't apply to Haverford Township. We've got information from the United Nations. You know that greatest conglomeration of Marxist dictators that spread Jew hatred because they're Jew haters. So Todd, don't use antisemitic. Let's, let's get to the bottom line upfront. We're talking Jew hatred. And we're talking Jew haters. So how many people in Haverford Township no longer shop here? I ran into Judy Trombetta at the, at the Brew Ball Giant. I shop there because I'm given a choice. That's kind of what I am. I'm a pro-choice guy. Paper or plastic? That's what freedom's about. All right? When the jackboot of government eliminates our choice, then we're in a totalitarian society. That's not what I really envision, especially not in local government. We have Haverford Township. The only Democrat who voted against it is a data-centric individual, Dr. Hart. Because there's data related. We need to know what the data is. There's no data provided by the EAC for Haverford Township. So how many people are like me who no longer shop in Haverford Township? How many of our community-run stores have increased or seen an increase in shoplifting? Has anyone solicited that? Absolutely not. That wasn't part of the justification. With no data, we're pushing ideology. Pure and simple. Marxist, elitist, leftist, progressive, Democrat ideology. You know who pushed that, that, that ideology in the past? Let me give you two names. You might recall these. Claudine Gay, the former president of Harvard, disgraced plagiarist, and Liz McGraw, former president of the University of Pennsylvania. Their smirks when they were interviewed by, uh, the House Committee didn't bode very well for those individuals. They thought, oh, yes, freedom of speech, yes, protection of Jews on campus, not very much of a concern. So let's get back to evaluating whether there's a success or a failure of the single-use plastic bag ban. I think it's a failure. And nobody has evaluated its success or failure, and nobody cares to because it was just passed as a Marxist, elitist, leftist, progressive, democratic ideology. And that shortchanges our township residents. It shortchanges the business community. All of us are losers. Freedom of choice, letting the marketplace decide whether people want plastic or paper bags is the way to go. Incidentally, how many of our residents have left their recyclable plastic bag that they bought at the supermarket at home and had to buy three or four? Yeah, a lot of people have. And that's why there's been a dramatic increase in the use of plastic bags. It has had the exact opposite of its intended, um, impact. And just as Robert Merton would talk about, these are the unintended consequences of absolutely poor decision-making. So thank you very much. Thank you. Anybody else, um, move to speak? Mr. Anderson. Oh, yes, Mr. Anderson.
I just want to say that plastic bag bans have nothing to do with Marxism or hating Jews. I also want to say, remind you too, that Derby Creek feeds right into the Delaware River, which feeds right into the Atlantic Ocean. And yes, plastic, everything floats and stays in there forever. Lastly, I want to say if you guys are complaining about your trash fees, the best way to reduce them is to throw away less stuff. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Anybody else would like to speak?
Question on something related to trails, very township-specific. It's like, it's a link.
No, it's fine. You can come back up. You have a question, that's fine.
Uh, trail extension of the-
I mean, if you, if you end up, you know, haranguing us, we're going to ban you forever, but go ahead.
No, no, yeah, again, there's been a lot of hot topics. This is a more laid-back one. I thought about asking you afterwards, but I'll just ask you now. Uh, the trail extension of Derby Creek from Mary Place to, uh-
Warrior.
What's the name of the field?
McDonald Field.
McDonald Field, former commissioner. Um, there is a property in that area that I think has been empty. Is it an acquisition of the property, an easement? How does that work?
The township owns that property.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the township owns it and, uh, we're exploring options.
Okay. It has, I think, a no trespassing sign, which is fine.
Well, I wouldn't want anybody trespassing on the house.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, there's nobody living there.
No, I walked through with my son and I said, you know, we're just walking through to get to the next part. I understand what's there and, you know, we all lived, but I was curious for, so good, okay?
Yeah, we're getting there.
All right. Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. You're a man of your word. Uh, yes, Ms. Schwab.
I just say, like, I understand the gentleman. I just want to thank you for the plastic ban. And I, I really appreciate it because I love the fact that when I walk around, I don't see plastic bags stuck in the tree floating over and making our township look horrible. As far as the giant down here, I go down there all the time. I keep trying to get a parking spot, especially, I think we're doing pretty good with that.
Uh, you're, that's very kind, to the extent that the microphone didn't pick you up. Um, thank you for, um, validating, uh, the board's decision on the plastic bag ban. That is, um, um, I guess something folks will still want to debate. Um, I still shop here. Um, I think the Democratic Party, though, may be entertaining a motion to, um, throw Ms. Trombetta out of the party now that she, um, leaves the township to go somewhere else and get plastic bags.
I can say, I think I've seen her there, but she has her bags.
Yeah, all right. Well, anyway, the time, yeah, Ms. Trombetta will have a chance to defend herself, no doubt. But, uh, we're, some of us hardcore leftist Marxist crazies are pretty upset at this news. So I just thought I'd let everybody know.
I have one more thing to say to defend-
I'm sure you'll get your time, Ms. Trombetta, to defend yourself.
And I have one, one more thing to say.
Absolutely.
The vote was eight to one for the plat- plastic bag ban, and I was the only one to vote no. I gave my reasonings why. So I just wanted to let, um, him, or, um, him know that Todd, Dr. Hart did, did vote yes for it, so.
And I am data-centric, though.
I just wanted to let everybody know.
Data-centric, but Marxist leftist Democrat, so, um, thank you for that. Um, I do, um, I do appreciate, uh, all joking aside, everybody's comments. We obviously invite them. And, um, as the timer on Mr. Berman's, um, computer continues to roll well past three, uh, we do our best not to limit any folks who have something to say. Um, so I appreciate everybody's comments, and I appreciate the people who come out, you know, um, quite often to the meeting and aren't, um, aren't at all bashful about, uh, letting us know how we can do things, uh, better. Um, so thank you all for those comments. Um, it is, um, uh, is the time in our meeting for new business. Does any commissioner have any? Um, we then move on to other business, um, and start with Commissioner Gondik.
Thank you. Uh, first, I'd like to just start off by congratulating the Finland Exchange, uh, specifically the Haverford Hawks Ice Hockey Club and the Vikingit Hockey Club of Helsinki, uh, their counterparts in Finland. I apologize if I butchered that pronunciation. Um, it was a great, it was great being able to be at the puck drop, uh, the opening ceremonies for that event last week. Uh, it was, it was neat, uh, just knowing that it was the 25th year that they've run that event. Um, and just kind of a cultural exchange where, you know, our kids go over there and, and spend time living in, with host families and vice versa. This time, they were here staying with host families and, you know, talking to some of our, uh, Haverhawks families who were hosting one, two kids. Um, it was just, it was just very neat and I think it's a great program. I, I look forward to it continuing. Um, that being said, by way of kind of announcements, uh, the Westgate Hill Civic Association is organizing a community yard sale for Saturday, April 20th, starting at 8:00 AM. If you're interested in participating in that or learning the specific locations that will be participating, I encourage you to contact them. Uh, probably the best way is through their Facebook page. Um, I believe that that's how they're having people sign up. Um, I'm also happy to report that the new Aubrey Vitae's were, uh, planted over at the park, uh, around the heart of Westgate. Uh, and, uh, it's really starting to take shape over there. If now that the weather's turning and starting to get nice and hopefully the rain holds off a little bit, uh, maybe take a stroll over there and, and check it out. Uh, the, the park's really starting to kind of come together and, and around that project. Um, and if you are interested, there are still, uh, commemorative bricks, uh, for sponsorship, uh, there through the Civic Association. If you contact them, um, it's a nice way to, you know, memorialize friends, families, and so on. Um, as far as some other things, I would just note, because I always get people asking about this, there is a shredding event, uh, for Haverford Township, uh, paper, uh, this Saturday, April 13th, from 8:00 to 11:00 AM in the township, uh, parking lot. Uh, so if you have, uh, old financial documents or whatever that you want to safely dispose of, I encourage you, uh, to participate in that particular event. Um, talking about getting rid of things from your home, uh, I've been made aware that the Cradles to Crown Giving Spot, uh, is going to be opening this month, I believe, April 18th, uh, at the YMCA on Eagle Road. Um, there, it's a collection site for, uh, clothing, uh, that is used for the West Fortunate. Um, so I encourage people to be aware of that and to utilize that, uh, when they can. Uh, and that's about it. Other than that, uh, congratulations, Soren U. Sergeant, and, uh, have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Gondik. Commissioner Forstiegrupp.
Mr. President, I would like to first of all say that, um, I very, I think that the Safe Streets for All, uh, focus groups have been very, uh, important. The Ward Two One was quite informative. And it was striking how many people at the Ward Two meeting were talking about, um, how little people pay attention to signs. How little people pay attention to the fact that they shouldn't turn up that one-way street, even though Google Maps says, maybe I, I do want that shortcut between Cityline Avenue and Westchester Pike. Um, I was standing outside, walking my dog, talking to a neighbor on my street, which is one-way, and somebody just barreled straight, just going the wrong way. So I would urge everyone to observe all marked signs and speed limits and even go a little bit below the speed limit, especially on residential streets, because there are children outside in the beautiful weather that we've been getting, playing, playing ball and, and, uh, just riding their bikes. So let, let's be careful of our little ones. I would also, uh, urge everyone to, um, make sure you're signed up for emails from your commissioner, maybe even other commissioners, and also for the township email because it is so important as a way of us disseminating information to you. We are trying to be as transparent as possible, but we know that, um, um, there are lots of distractors in your lives, our lives, my life. And so I urge you to sign up for, um, email alerts from your commissioners and do check your, um, junk mail folders, because sometimes that's where our emails end up. But we are trying to communicate as much as possible because, uh, we want to hear what you have to say. We really are curious. And I see you waving your hand, and I will defer to Mr. Holmes. A gentleman has a question at the back.
So I will, um, uh, right before I speak, I'll invite Mr. Lee to ask his question, but let's continue with our, um-
All right. And, um-
Our other business.
Bend the library, go enjoy the library at Manoa Center because it's so easy to get to, and there's plenty of parking there. That's it.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Forstiegrupp. Uh, Commissioner McCloskey.
Sure. Um, there are several, uh, 5Ks in the, in the area that are coming up next month supporting worthy causes. I'll save a couple for my other commissioners, and O'Connor and Dr. Hart, uh, have a couple that they would say. But there's the Haverford Twilight Run on April 27th, um, supporting Haverford Township Education Foundation. If you can make it out, I think they're having a ward challenge involving the various elementary schools. Um, and then, uh, the Mighty Mojo, uh, race is this Saturday, uh, at Ridley Creek State Park, started by a, a Havertown fa- family, um, supporting CDH Research. Um, if you can make it, it's for a very good cause. It's, uh, last year was their first race and it was, uh, an inspiring day. Um, encourage everyone to attend. And obviously, the news of the day was the eclipse that we didn't get a great sign of in Haverford Township because of cloud cover. Um, but, you know, anytime there's something, uh, with the moon and the sun and the stars, it's a reminder of, uh, you know, just how big the planet is and how big the universe is. And hopefully, um, I know for, at least for me, the, the concept is to just, we're all just trying to coexist in this world together. So hopefully, everyone can be kind over the next months and seasons, uh, to each other. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner McCloskey. Uh, Commissioner Cavender.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to note that primary day is coming up, April 23rd. Um, encourage everyone to vote, no matter your party, um, whether you vote in person or by mail. The township also has a Dropbox out front, um, where you can just drop your mail off, your, your ballot off by hand, and it'll be delivered to media. You can also drop it off in media. Um, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. April is Autism Awareness Month, and this year's theme is Act Fearlessly for Change. So while awareness is important, I want to also encourage our community to champion acceptance of differences in learning and other neurodiversity, um, differences. This year, our Parks and Recreation Department established a pilot program over spring break week that was targeted to those children with autism and other special needs. I hope they continue to reach out to this community with similar programming in the future. Cooper Town Elementary, which is in the fifth ward, is also sponsoring a number of activities related to autism acceptance throughout April. My son is autistic. Like 99% of parents, I knew almost nothing about autism or neurodiversity before his diagnosis when he was three. With every year that passes, I believe more strongly that the autistic community has so much to offer the world that's in part due to inclusion as well as research. I challenge everyone to take the time to learn more about autism and to champion autistic individuals in your community. Thank you to the township, as well as to the school district, for creating more inclusive environments and for providing meaningful opportunities for autistic children and their families in Haverford. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Cavender. Uh, Commissioner Quinn.
Hey, well, fir- first off, I'd like to express my condolences to Brook, 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 to Brook, Brookline Fire Department on the loss of Gary Lang, Langens. He, he was a big part of the, um, of, of Brook, Brook, Brookline. I've, I've known him for, for years. He was just a great, great guy, and it's a tou- tough one for all of them. So I'm keep, keeping them for you and, uh, like everybody, you know, my prayers. And congratulations to Sergeant, 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 to, uh, Sergeant McDonald. Um, Chief, you have a great, Chief, and that, uh, Chief, you guys have a great, great team, team there. And thanks for continuing to make our community safe. And thank you for all your hard, hard work that you put into recruiting and stuff, stuff like that over the years. So thanks. Thank you. And, um, this past week, weekend was, um, was the opening day for, 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 uh, the Little League. And, um, it was great for everybody who came, came out and saw the, well, the unveiling of McGarretty Field. Um, I think we all know what Jim McGarretty meant to this ward, ward, ward here. There's not a day that go-go is by that I get told of something that, that he did, did it, he did, did it over the years and get told I'm not Jim Jimmy, and I know that. So, so, um, yeah, but, 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 but I'd like to thank everybody who came and, uh, met me that day. So, 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 well, such a great day. And I'll defer for all the 5Ks for Dr. Hart to say. So, um, so everybody have a great, great month.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Hart.
Yes, I'm gonna do the race updates. Uh, this coming Sunday, April 14th, in the afternoon, the Kevin K. 5K Run, uh, goes through the streets of Brookline. It's a fundraiser, um, for an organization that supports families and patients with cancer. Uh, on Saturday, April 27th, at 5:00 PM, is the Twilight Run, which is sponsored by the Haverford Township, um, Education, uh, Association. Um, yeah, it's a great run. There's usually a lot of, um, bonuses, being able to, uh, get, uh, go into restaurants and bars afterward. So it's a, it's a fun time. And then finally, on, uh, May 8th, at 7:00 o'clock, it's Ann's Purple for a Purpose Race Against Pancreatic Cancer. It's a race that kicks off the Sunset Trail Runs at the, uh, at the Crick. Um, the, it's a, unlike the other runs, this one, well, this will be a three-mile trail run, but there's also a one-mile walk. And again, the proceeds go to a benefit pan, pan can for pancreatic cancer. And then finally, on another topic, um, this April marks five years since we started the process of, um, updating- process of updating our comprehensive plan. There's been a lot of reasons for a slow movement. The pandemic certainly set us back, but we're getting towards the thing where it's time to start looking at our next comprehensive plan. So I think, you know, that we need to move this to the top. I know, again, but we need to get this done soon so that it can be voted on and put out in the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. Commissioner McCollum.
Just a couple of quick announcements echoing with Commissioner Cavender said earlier. Today's the last day to register for the primary on April 23rd, so anybody still going to do that, go to www.pavoterservices.pav.gov before midnight tonight. Ward 9 Township Safe Streets Study is tomorrow at the Bethany Evangelical Presbyterian Church on Concord Avenue at 6:00 p.m. And last but not least, I'd like to publicly congratulate the president of Hilltop Baseball, Softball, and Challenger, Fred Staggwell IV. Serving the league for 25 years as president, I attended the 60th opening day ceremonies. I was joined by Commissioner Forstie-Grupp and had the privilege of presenting Fred with an official proclamation and plaque from the Board of Commissioners, thanking him for 25 years dedicated service to the youth of the township. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner McCollum. Commissioner Trombetta.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Haverford Township will celebrate Earth Day on Saturday, April 20th, at the Haverford Reserve. Residents can take part in tree planting, stream bank restoration and beautification projects at or around the Crick area. We have two morning service project time slots available, and I encourage folks to volunteer by going online and registering. I hadn't really prepared remarks on this, but I did want to address to some extent the remarks regarding the curbside composting feasibility study, namely that this study was performed and funded by USDA grants. We hired a consultant to prepare a report and to provide recommendations to our Board of Commissioners, and she did so via our work session last week. But I want to be very clear here because I don't want information getting out that we're suddenly moving in one direction right now. That was a report with recommendations. There are no concrete plans right now to move forward with any such recommendation. We will explore it, and I can assure you that with our environmental committee via our Board of Commissioners and with the Environmental Advisory Committee and with, of course, our township staff, we will look at those recommendations closely, but we will take no action until we have, without additional input, I think, from the public and without really exploring this comprehensively. Speaking of environment, you know, I'm just going on environment all day today. But speaking of environmentally friendly initiatives, the Pennsylvania Resource Council's Traveling Glass Recycling Bin has returned to the township. It's located in the lower parking lot at the Haverford Township Administration Building here, 1014 Darby Road, for those who aren't here tonight. And the bin will be available for your glass recycling until May 3rd, so I encourage you to bring your glass jars, bottles, and other items to help us fill the bin. I don't think I need to respond about where I shop, but I would just say that I encourage everyone to discover Haverford. Thank you.
Bravo. Thank you, Commissioner Trombetta. Mr. Lee, you had a question?
Last March or something, or a year or two ago, I signed up at the website, and there's this whole bunch of marks that you can check off for Judy Trombetta's thing and for other commissioners' emails and all sorts of other stuff. And around, I don't know, November, I no longer got anything at all. And most of the time, I didn't get anything that was, I was picking off on the website. So I went back in January, and I filled out again, still didn't get anything. I went back again, another later on, and filled it out. It's this check-off box. And now I finally started getting this, this thing that we're using for Safe Streets for All now, and it also has other stuff. And that's excellent, but it'd be nice if we, the website thing that we can sign up for, if we actually got the emails that we're supposed to get. And that's why people complain about transparency. And thank you so much for allowing me.
You're most welcome. Thank you for that heads up. I certainly will ask our IT group to examine that, test it. If something has interfered, particularly with your transmissions or them all over the township, we will address it.
Well, thank you, because if that would work, the township would have a great transparency. And I really appreciate it that you brought it up about transparency because that's really important. I know a number of commissioners talk about it, too. So thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your comments. A couple of things to report. With regard to the comprehensive plan, I know I've said this before, but I will say it again. There was obviously a great deal of input, both during the construction of the plan, the first plan, as well as a great deal of public input upon its presentation as appropriate. We took those comments into consideration, and the plan is being retooled, trying to take as many of those comments into consideration for the new plan. We have, as a township, also extended an offer to add to our staff a certified planner. That person, if they come on board in early May, which is currently our hope, is going to significantly help us streamline and speed up the process to get another comprehensive plan out before everybody. That is something that is the priority of everybody here on this board. A great deal of work has gone into that, and we're certainly not going to let that work go in vain. It's also, just a reminder to folks that everybody, with the exception of this new certified planner who we may be bringing on board as a full-time employee, everybody else that worked on that plan was a volunteer. Either some of our own committees or were community volunteers to do this. So these folks are giving their time and their intelligence, and so we are pushing to get this done as fast as possible, but we have to work within people's capabilities and with any other conflicts that they, time conflicts that they have. So I appreciate the continued questions about it, and I can assure you that we, as a board, take it very seriously, and it is one of our priorities in 2024. I think earlier somebody mentioned that it is primary day and several Tuesdays from now. What is it, the 23rd?
23rd.
Yeah, April 23rd. Today, I think before midnight, if you haven't registered to vote, you still can, and you can get an absentee ballot for another week until next Tuesday. But no matter what, I encourage everybody to come out to the primary. And I'm going to make an appeal. I've made this appeal before, and I will say it again. Pennsylvania does not allow independents to vote in primaries when parties are picking their candidates. That is not, while that's not universal, that is generally the way primary elections work in the United States and certainly how primaries work here in Pennsylvania. And I would say to all those folks, those independents who are out there right now and are distressed that they can't participate in the primaries, your former parties or perhaps your new parties need you. They need you back. As more and more people leave parties and become independent, it is leaving our parties sometimes in the hands of folks who may have more extreme views than quite a few Americans do. The parties could use that tempering influence that moderates and what a lot of independents brought to their parties. So I ask folks to rethink why they chose to go independent. Anybody can vote for anyone they want in the general election, but if a party ideology matters to you or people feel one way or another and are drawn toward a certain group, remember that even if you don't agree with everything they do, you can have a good influence on that party. And I think it is the departure of people from parties, departures of moderate voices and moderate minds, may have contributed to some of the situations we're dealing with now in America. So I would just ask people to think about that as we're in primary season and think about it for the future. That is all that I have. If, unless anybody has anything else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
We are adjourned.